Madam President, Amy, come motion to adjourn from executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Love moved and Mrs. McGee seconded. All those in favor of adjourning the executive session, please say aye.
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 Okay, our study session this evening is on our annual financial report and Mrs. Barry is going to present tonight and give us a detailed presentation on our annual financial report.
All right, Madam President, members of the board, if you can't hear me, let me know and I'll take my mask down, but right now, I'll keep it up for right now. But if you can't hear me, let me know. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting on the annual financial report from 2019-2020. I am going to review a number of things, but as you know, our fiscal year starts July 1st and it ends June 30th. So now, tonight, what we're doing is we're recapping what we spent from July 1st through June 30th. We have an encumbrance period. Sometimes people say, why don't you report this in July since it ends June 30th? And that's because we have two months to ultimately pay our bills during an encumbrance period and collect the revenues that are either due from the state, due from certain grants, different things like that through that period of time. We also have grants that are finished, typically grants. We finish them and complete what's called the completion report in September. And so by the time we pay our bills, collect our revenues, and close out on all of our grants, and then finish the journal entries that need to take place, they allow us then to finish the annual financial report and submit it to the state by October the 15th. So this really is just an accounting process. It's the system that we use. The AFR is the final document that you're approving of last year, and it does a number of things to help us, but ultimately, the auditor general produces these forms and then we submit this report and our general ledger to the auditor general so they can then complete a report that you guys probably have all seen, which looks like the Chandler School District Report, and we receive that in February. They will take all this data. It takes them till about February. They'll report our information in the State Superintendent's Report, and then they'll do every single individual district. So that's where they get the information from. So why is this report important? There's a number of things. It's a measurement tool for Journey 2025. You're going to see a couple slides on that. It captures all of our expenditures, our revenues, all the transfers, everything that happened in that fiscal year. Our auditors are here this week and they're looking over every single detail related to the expenditures, the revenues, the transfers, the issuance of debt, all of that. And the AFR is a huge piece of the audit. It creates the CAFR. It creates all of our financial documents. It also helps us look at coding, budgets, over expenditures, under expenditures. Why did we go up by a percentage, down by a percentage? And we like to compare things. We can't change the budget anymore, but we can change it for next fiscal year or the one we're currently in. So it helps us to really clean up data and to look into things when things are over or under or coded incorrectly. We also start to look at trends. What are things that are happening within certain areas and potential issues that we might have? And it helps us, now that we've been a growing district for years, we potentially will be a declining district in the future. And so those items helps us look at for the future, especially when we go into the budget process, starting at the beginning of this next fiscal year. It also helps us calculate our indirect cost rate that we use for all of our grants and for food service for the next fiscal year. So who uses the report? There's a number of people. We use it. We use it in our annual report that Teri and Dr. Castile put together to present for the school year of last year and for this upcoming fiscal year. Our bondholders require it. They look at the annual financial report, and then from that, it creates our CAFR. And ultimately, they review that every year, our bondholders do. Our district auditors obviously use that to create our financial reports. The Arizona Department of Education uses it and the State Superintendent to compile the information based on the state. Different stakeholders throughout our district use it when they're promoting their businesses, realtors, different things like that. The Auditor General's Office uses it to create the report that I showed you that we all measure. At least, school districts, public school districts use. And of course, the State Superintendent uses it as their main measurement tool for finances. So there's a number of pages that you received. You received the actual annual financial report, and it's got a cover sheet on it, and then it's pages one through nine with a summary sheet and information. The very first sheet of that report, after the cover sheet, is your revenue sheet. And ultimately, our state is driven by the number of students that you receive in a district, and the miles driven are pretty much how you receive the dollars in Arizona. But how do you get those dollars? Well, majority of them from our levy funds are in our maintenance and operations, our capital, our adjacent ways, and our debt service. So that page captures all the money that comes in from taxpayers, from state aid, from county equalization, from our debt. All of that shows up on that first page. And so what are the differences between 2018 and 2019? And I always like to look at that. Well, we've gone up. Why have we gone up in revenue? Well, because we grew and because the governor's 2020 was part of that process, so was inflation. There's a number of factors. So that's why maintenance and operations is up. Also, capital is up because they have been restoring capital. So you can see our capital revenues were up. Adjacent ways is an area that was down, and the reason it was down is because we were in a bond election year this year, and we decided not to tax, go after a tax for adjacent ways during this last fiscal year of 1920, especially having a bond election on the ballot. So the only thing that was received in adjacent ways was interest money because we have about $1.4 million in adjacent ways, and so we had interest in there. Debt service, as we've sold more debt over the last few years, that debt service amount has gone up and will continue to increase next year as we just sold $125 million worth of bonds. So how do fund balances work? In the levy account, they don't necessarily match your carryover. They're similarly close. You compare them. You do a lot of reporting on them. But really, fund balance is revenues minus your expenditures plus transfers, and you get an ending balance. Budget capacity is a little bit different. It's how much was your budget minus your expenditures, and what do you have on budget capacity left over? Very similar, but they don't match exactly because taxes don't come in perfect. Not everybody pays all their taxes on time. There's adjustments to state aid. There's other factors in there, but they are similarly correlated. Tax rates are important because a lot of our budget, almost 50%, comes from tax rates for our levy funds. And so this is just a great chart. We've been using it for years to show you that we are very fortunate here in Chandler Unified. We cover three different municipalities: the City of Chandler, Town of Gilbert, and the Town of Queen Creek. Our secondary assessed value and our primary assessed value continues to go up, and so that's why you do see some flux within our tax rate. Mostly, the flux has to do with the qualifying tax rate that the legislature sets on that primary tax. And then ultimately, our bonds and our overrides are really the other factor. Slight adjustment depending on adjacent ways for that fiscal year. But we stayed pretty similar. You can see, since 2015, we've been at $6.61, and this year, the one that we just finished, we are at $6.47. So just a good comparison of where we're at with tax rates and the fiscal years. I just like to kind of show some of those visuals. Tax changes, there's been a few major changes, but it's mostly been related to the primary property tax rate changes have been due to assessed values. So overall, the state looks at the assessed value. If the state goes up with their assessed value, then the state legislature decreases the qualifying tax rate, called the QTR, because if assessed values go up, the QTR goes down. But that doesn't always correlate specifically to your school district. So if your school district grows more than what the state average did, then potentially, your property tax could go up. So there are some adjustments in there. It's not perfect compared to what the state average is. Depends on your school district. But ultimately, if assessed values go up, the qualifying tax rate goes down, and that impacts your primary tax rate specifically. We haven't really changed too much. There's slight changes within that because of our assessed value. And then the secondary property tax rate are things like your overrides, which increased for us over five years ago, where we went from the 10% to the 5%. And then our bond values, because we've been selling those, and we've been trying to keep it as even as possible, but that slightly changes, again, based on assessed value in those areas and how much we've sold. So that's the only change. We try to keep that as minimal as possible because we know that's really important to not only our residents, but our stakeholders here in Chandler. The next pages, pages two through nine, outline and go through all the details of the expenditures within the fiscal year. So pages two through nine detail not only the maintenance and operations budget, but your proposition budgets, all of the capital funds that come in, all of the cash funds, which I call enterprise funds, or funds that we have services, that we receive services for, bring cash back in and then have expenditures for, and they outline each of those areas. Overall, our maintenance and operations budget, which was on page two, it is up compared to 2018-2019, and that's because we had more students. Our budget went up. We gave raises. Health insurance went up. There was a number of things that were approved through the MP 5,000 process. So of course, we had a bigger budget, and therefore, we expensed more money. Capital went up. The biggest portion of capital that changed was we had an additional amount for instructional aids in that line item. That's the biggest change compared to the year before. But we ultimately received more revenue in, and we spent an extra amount in 2019-20 compared to 1819. Adjacent ways down, and that's because we have made sure to earmark the adjacent way money for the new Rice Elementary School and the new High School Number Seven. And so we had approximately $1.4 million in that fund. We saved it for this fiscal year, and we're going to be utilizing that as we finish paying out Rice Elementary School and High School Number Seven in fiscal year 2021. Classroom site fund continued to go up, and there was more expenditures. We have more staff members, but also, it had increased from the prior year. So we increased the performance pay, and we also gave an increase in the teachers' base salary. So both of those went hand in hand, so that's why the expenditures are up within the classroom site fund. Non-levy funds, those are all those funds that are cash funds. Ultimately, the state's not responsible for that. The districts bring in money. Indian Gaming being not necessarily a levy fund, but it's a cash fund coming from the state. It was down in expenditures overall. The amount of expenditures was $1,550,000. We didn't have to offset any of our prop money, so we had a slight less amount. Also, schools, because of the very end not being here in person. Some of those services, they had outlined for their kids. If it was move on when reading or tutoring services, some of those were not finished. And so that's why the expenditures overall were slightly down in Indian Gaming. State and federal was up, mostly significantly related to ESAR and the Enrollment Stability Grant. So the two grants that we had that came through for COVID, they are the reason that we are up compared to the last fiscal year, otherwise very comparable for our entitlements, our special education budgets, our CTE budgets. But the biggest change was the COVID dollars. And those were expenditures. Didn't get revenues in for those yet, but ultimately have expenditures in those funds. The last category is the School Facilities Board, with the bonds, bond money, adjacent ways, debt service, and that's up in this fiscal year, mainly due to the School Facilities Board receiving money for High School Number Seven and the land, also because our debt service, as we pay more, there's more of a principal and an interest payment that increased compared to the last fiscal year. I like this chart. I think it's a great chart that is always really good to go back to and compare and look at. If you take the main levy funds and Indian Gaming, which is the four funds that all school districts across the state are very equivalent in, your maintenance and operations, your Prop 301, your Indian Gaming, and your capital, you can see that our total expenditures increased from the previous year about $20 million in expenses. That means that overall, when you take 44,808 ADM, average daily membership, which we increased by 258 actual students, that we went up about $400 per student. And why is that? Well, we gave a 5% raise. We had an increase in our health insurance that we came up with. We increased our teachers by approximately 40 new staff members, and there was a few other things within that MP 5,000 process. So we grew. The number of kids, again, remember, our budget grew that year in 1920 compared to 1819. But we also had a handful of expenditures that we approved in that MP 5,000 process and a slight amount more that we spent in capital. So because of that, that's the $20 million that we did expense.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It kind of relates to this one, plus that you have others like this with more
Yeah.
plots included. Is there a way to look at this in relation to inflation rates?
So what would you see as a picture of what that would look like?
Maybe just another column of like, I don't know, if you're going to start with 2008, maybe in $2,008 or whatever's easier for you. I don't, however.
Are you wanting to see like, for example, if it was 1.8% inflation or 1.2? Are you looking for that inflation?
What would we have expected to get every year just with inflation?
Okay, sure.
And like, so we can see, are we really even keeping up with like, it looks like we're making more money or getting more money per student, but
Sure.
things cost more money now, too. So
Absolutely.
I'm just curious what that might look like, and if it's a lot of work, don't worry about it. I was just curious.
No, I think that's something to definitely look at. We can add inflation rates in there, for sure. And then we can probably add another column to show you what else was on the table at that time. Because, you know, some of these years, there was a Prop 1, 2, 3. So there's different initiatives that were part of that. The restructure of capital has been part of it. So we could put some of those initiatives probably at least in the notes category so you could see everything that took place. If that'd be correct.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I asked that same question on my own, and $2,008 is worth $1.21 today in $2020. So that number that if you took 6412 and multiplied it by 1.21, it would be $7,759 versus what we are actually spending of $7,434. There's a difference of about $300 more. If you go to the next slide and do the same thing, the difference is about $650. That if we had kept up with inflation, utilizing that $1.21, we would have gotten $9,255.
We're kindred spirits, women.
Great work.
But I was curious about, on the same thing, and no, we have not kept up with inflation since that 2008.
And I think, too, if you were to take out some of the other initiatives in there, let alone inflation, you'd really see probably the difference, too.
Sorry, but
No, that's great.
I'm a nerd.
Both would be great question and great research, Barb. The next one is the expenditures we add in, just to add in additional amount for all of the state and federal and other funds, all those cash funds too, related, not bonds, because that makes a big difference with the construction items that come in, but all your cash funds, your state and federal grants. And you can see that it increases, that we went from $8,100 and we're up to almost $8,600. Now, the main reason for that difference was the amount that we explained earlier with the inflation money coming in, the governor's 5%, that restructure of capital. But the other part that you see, not just the 20 million, because now we're up to almost 24 million, was the ESAR money, because we budgeted, and we have some money from the Enrollment Stability Grant and some of that in there. So that's why you see some of that slight change, too. The other, the next one is going to be, we added, not only do we add all the levy funds and all the non-levy funds, so all your state, federal, your maintenance and operations, your capital, your Indian Gaming, but we added in the debt service and the adjacent ways to this category. And you can see, we have a major jump again this year. It had went down slightly last year, and that's because we spent a little bit less overall than we did the previous year in bonds, but we had a huge jump here. And mostly, that was due to about $32 million coming in from the School Facilities Board, related to High School Number Seven and the land payment. We also have some of the lease payment information that's in here, part of that. We have building renewal grants, and then we have bond sales. So we had a lot of that happening last year, and so that makes an impact overall. As you can see, we went from $443 million to $492 million. So the big increase for that was also related, we had some bond dollars, obviously, the year before School Facilities Board, but we had a larger amount in 1920 than we did in 1819. So we're spending with bond dollars and every penny in the district. If you take every penny that we spent this year and divided it by our average daily membership, not our enrollment, you're going to get about almost $11,000 per student. All right, so just kind of, this is a little graph that just shows our enrollment has been going up. As you can see, this is the enrollment piece, and then here is our overall maintenance and operations. You can see the spend, this is the spend, sorry, maintenance operations are the blue. This is the enrollment that's ultimately there. So you can see that increase has been correlated. We've been very fortunate to grow for years and years. All right, this is just a short chart full of data and information. I like it because it has two important factors on here, I think. It shows you our ADM growth. So since 2005, all the way through 15 years later, we're up almost 15,000 students during that 15-year period of time. It shows you our number of schools going from 32 down to 43. This also correlates to the numbers. If you can, on page nine of the AFR, it asks for how many teachers we have. We had 2,404 teachers that were Chandler Unified School District. We have seven that we outsourced in a sense, and I believe are purchased back through ESI. So we have 2,411 certified staff members. We have 1,111 administrators, and we have a total of 5,284 total staff members. So the difference would be the classified staff that we added on this last fiscal year. So 5,284 employees in our school district. This chart is a great chart because it has tracked for years. Not only, it just takes our MNO expenditures. And the two major areas that we have for expenditures are salaries and benefits and utilities, and that pretty much makes up 90% of your budget. Then you have a little amount in travel. You have small amounts in supplies, and you have some in purchase services and other areas. But the two major areas are salaries and benefits and utilities. And we've been, you can see back during the Great Recession, we had a decrease even though we increased in students, but just during that time, all of those significant cuts. But then it's been growing and increasing, and you can see the major increases as some of the initiatives have been, came through over the years, the last few years especially. Utilities are going to, this is an interesting fact about utilities down here at the bottom. We did a little bit of research on that. A couple things. We noticed that our disposal services were down during COVID because the last fourth quarter, you're not, your dumpsters are probably not as full. You're not having as much expenditures in that area. We also noticed a decrease in our electricity bill. That was the main area that we did notice in the last fourth quarter, was our electricity side. So those two things during that fourth quarter were savings, especially in the disposal area and in the electricity area. We do do a journal entry out of maintenance and operations for telecom services, so there was a slight adjustment in that. Sometimes there's a little bit of an accounting piece in that slight adjustment there. But ultimately, the savings that we did see are related to electricity and disposal services. And then our teacher salaries, our administration and classified, everyone that comes out of maintenance and operations, we are now sitting at 89% of our budget. Almost 90% is salaries and benefits that come out of our maintenance and operations budget. This just does a breakdown of the actual maintenance and operations budget. 73% is ultimately going to the classroom. That would be everyone that's coded, to teachers, instructors, people who are supporting the classroom. Administration is specifically the superintendent's office, the board, the principal, and their admin assistant, and like the district office business service, technology services, HR services, that are funded out of maintenance and operations. Other in this area would be all those utility costs and other expenses that come out of the area called other. Capital expenditures are up this year, mostly due to instructional aids on a budget related to some of our instructional aids. And a lot of that has to do with software pieces that we purchase and utilize in our district. But as the capital has gone up, we've seen an increase in our overall capital expenditures. Most of our capital budget is within textbooks, white fleet, our software products and instructional aids, and some tech capital equipment, especially for like our maintenance and operation team, our ground staff, and our support service area. That's gone up, and it went up compared to 2018-2019. Debt has gone up. As you can see, our overall outstanding debt is now at $274 million. Compared, you can see our assessed value continues to grow up, to go up. So we are at about a 7.5% ratio of debt percentage of assessed value. We can only access up to 20% of our assessed value. That's the cap by legislation and by authority. So we still have the ability to access about 12.5% if we needed to of that, and it's limited to your voter-approved initiative. But we're at about 7.5%. Classroom site fund continues to go up this past year, and you can see expenditures as they've been going. The only reason that you see a decrease a few years ago was just due to how we paid a couple of the payments, based on how we paid it in June of one year, and then the next fiscal year, we actually waited until the next following year to pay it. So that's some of the payment that ultimately typically would have been in 1617 was paid in 1516, and then we had a delay here that we ultimately paid in 1718. But typically, there has been a natural increase in Proposition 301 money, the sales tax revenues as it has increased. We will get some projections on that. We're getting more and more right now. They're backfilling a lot with stimulus money into the state budget right now. So we got some good news about not such a big deficit right now compared to what their projections were. They're utilizing a ton of the stabilization money from the federal government to backfill the state budget right now, and it'll be interesting to see what that projection looks like. And we know that for the state levy funds, we're not quite so sure what's going to happen on that sales tax level. All right, one other thing, food and nutrition is one of the pages that you received. It's a separate report of itself, and it's a requirement that we fill out for food and nutrition. We had some goals, and these were our goals for this fiscal year. We wanted to increase lunch by 4%. We wanted to make things look like a restaurant and look and feel like it. We know that our kids are food savvy. They want that high quality food, and they know they're out there purchasing it on the market. They know what they want and what they like. So we wanted to make it look more like that. We wanted to increase a lot of our procedures in the central kitchen, not only in food safety, but training our staff to maintain that quality and insurance there. We also wanted to try to control food costs and teach our staff, but also control it, because that's the second biggest expense besides salaries and food service. So how do we work on that? And how do we utilize our central kitchen for that? How do we decrease overtime, really maximize that, and really look at our mils per labor hour and analyze our data? And so for the first three quarters, we did a great job of that, and I have a chart to show you that. But then, of course, COVID hit, and that impacted food service quite a bit. I feel like Jenny Brockamonte and her team did an excellent job of managing not only the first three quarters, but managing COVID for our district, especially with the low frame reduced, and really getting out to different areas to serve the universal lunch program. That definitely made a difference for us. Otherwise, we could have lost a lot of money. There are school districts talking to our auditor about how they lost a lot of money. We definitely were able to not go in the black necessarily. We didn't gain what we would have liked to have gained, but we definitely held our own. Revenue was, were down. We were at $16 million. We were down about a half a million, and that's really due to the fourth quarter shutdown, because we were typically serving 150,000 mils. Now we're serving 75,000 mils during that universal feeding time. So even though that was great, that we got that many mils out, still a big difference. Expenditures, yes?
Oh, sorry. I was just curious, the projections, is it true that all the lunches are free and then they can buy extra if they want? So what's the projection for however long, if it lasts till December, or maybe it'll get extended further? But let's just say it just lasts till the end of the quarter. Do we know what that would be for this year? Is it going to be similar?
Great question. Actually, we're super excited. Last week, we got news that they're extending it to the whole fiscal year.
Okay.
So we are really excited about that. Obviously, first quarter mils counts were extremely down, and even starting school, very hard, even though kids know that it's free breakfast and free lunch, they're still not eating at the levels we would love for them to see them eat at. But hopefully, that will get better. But they just extended it all the way through the end of the actual fiscal year 2021. So we are hoping that we can get back and make a profit in a significant level compared to where we were at. We were very worried about this year because it started off so drastically wrong. Dr. Castile was able to do even an article or write, or she was on with a reporter back from the New York Times, trying to help, you know, get out the information about food service. One thing you have to realize is that, remember when you saw our numbers, we were at 150,000 mils and we were only serving 75,000 mils? The entire nation was like that. So ultimately, the federal government was not paying out what they typically would have paid out for the last fourth quarter if kids had just been in school and eating. It was so drastically down. And now, schools across the country that are still not open are in that same situation. So they actually have a surplus at the federal level that they can help schools with, I think, through the rest of this fiscal year, because a lot of schools aren't going to come back for the first quarter or first semester, and we don't know about them for the rest of the year. And so that's why they've extended that with a lot of information. Airmark was lobbying for us and on the behalf of a number of school districts across the nation, but that really helped. But we do believe we'll be able to give you more numbers as we start to see how the participation increases. Jenny and her team came in to see me this week, and they are, not only are they going to do breakfast and lunch, they're finding ways to feed the community education students snacks and then take home a little dinner packet. They're also finding ways to feed our band students and our sports teams, and they're coming up with creative ideas to serve our community, to try to help with that also. So we're going to still try to get out as many mils as possible and then try to recap, recapture some of that growth that we were hoping for in the past.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting you.
No, that's okay. Great question. Ultimately, so expenditures are down overall because, again, even though we weren't quite serving as many students as we typically were during that fourth quarter. So that's, even though the labor costs were all there, the supply costs were not. Ending cash balance, we ended at $550,000 in food service. That's due to a couple different things. I'm going to go over a slide with you in particular. We can only carry over three months' worth of expenditures in our ending balance. So we have to be really careful with that. We do a lot of accounting to move that money, and I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. We do a lot of accounting to move that money, and I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. Is it as high as we would have liked? No, we should have been up about $400,000 more. But we, we feel like we still ended in a great spot, and we're able to do a lot with our food service department last year. A couple of quick slides on this. You can see, these were our total counts from before COVID. We were up overall. We were at 3.4 million meals served versus 3.2. The equivalents were higher. Lunches, we were slightly down in our breakfast, but we were up in our lunches and our equivalent. We were super excited about the, the gains that we'd had for, for participation. But then obviously, you can see the decreases when COVID took place, and they're really equivalent to just, just drastic hits, obviously, to not being able to serve all those students, even though we did the best job that we could. This slide actually goes over, though, financially, how we ended and what happened in food service. So our guarantee was $2.2 million with Airmark, and we ended at 550,000. So you kind of go, okay, how did, how, what's, what, how do you make up that $1.6 million? One of the things that in our contract that when we negotiated and we worked with our attorney on is when they originally put our contract together, they said, okay, we're going to project that you're going to have a 2% increase every single year. And when they put our guarantee together, it was, it was for the year before we even began with Airmark. They can't know what all of our raises are going to be. So if any raises are above that, the district has to ultimately cover that piece of it. Well, we've given approximately 26% increase in the food service department because with the minimum wage going up, and then with the governor's 20 by 2020, and us giving out those raises, we've seen a huge increase to our food nutrition staff. So much larger than what they projected with their raises. So we know that a lot of that comes due to that, it should have been about $400,000. But we also know that during COVID, we weren't able to serve all of our students typically, but we were paying all of our food service workers, even our student workers during that period of time. So that part is part of the contract we ultimately have to cover. Our capital expenditures, we upgraded a number of all of our elementary schools and some of our high schools and junior highs. We put $1.1 million. So we were able to take a lot of the revenue that we made last year and input it into our schools, which was fantastic. We had McCarthy, which you guys saw the contract on that, for almost close to $900,000 between the construction and the equipment and the architect that upgraded all of those. So we were able to, to really increase our equipment and the, the age of our equipment in our facilities. We moved $1.3 million to indirect cost. And then we also moved out $1.7 million of expenses from food service into our enrollment stability grant because we have to account for a lot of expenditures to be able to account for the enrollment stability grant that's coming in. And I'll go over that in just a minute. So ultimately, that's what makes up that $1.6 million. But if we did not spend anything on construction, you would ultimately have ended with $1.6 million in there. And it's not quite as high as ultimately as what we would have liked. But again, we thought we still did a great job in the fourth quarter, not really going into the black where a lot of districts were really hurt by that. So we feel like we did a fantastic job still in food service last fiscal year. The ending balance, we were, we started the year at $2.9 million. We're going to end at $3.5 million. So we're still within that threshold of three months of expenditures. So that's part of the reason we journal entry some of the expenses and revenues out. We did a lot. We did grow our lunch program about 3.3%. We grew à la carte by about 5.5%. We had some renovations throughout our schools that you can see. And we did some things with Serve Safe and some things in the central kitchen. And then we fed still 1.4 million meals, which is pretty incredible during that period of time. Outside in the heat, our employees really did a great job. I'm really proud of what they did and how they served our community during that period of time. All right, the next piece is, I just wanted to wrap up a little bit on COVID impact. The, the big impact to our, to COVID that took place last year, and I know there were some questions on that, was our cash funds. And you've seen that when I put together the COVID information that I gave to you. Community ed and civic center has probably been our, one of our largest hits at $2.4 million. And most of that's because we had employees that were coded out of there all the way from March through June, and we didn't have the students participating. So we were paying out and not getting revenues that came in. Very different than the state giving us any state funds. They didn't give us funds. You only, we did get a little bit from the Department of Economic Security, small amount, but nothing insignificant enough to make an impact. So that was a huge decrease for us overall in community ed. We ended up moving some of those expenses out, and they're sitting in the enrollment stability grant. So that's why there's a little disclaimer on there that says the funds don't specifically show that on the AFR because we've moved out some of the expenditures into the enrollment stability grant. But overall, we did ultimately lose about $2.4 million in community ed. The major reason we had to make the change to our employee contracts this fiscal year because there's no money coming in for those contracts unless they're services. And our students, we're still not serving the same amount of students as we were in the past. We're serving about 1,200 students in community ed, so drastically down. Food service, we lost approximately about $400,000 overall that compared to what we should have. That, that's a little bit different compared to where we should have been. Auxiliary, we were down $484,000. And most of that has to do with, we didn't have fourth quarter activities. We had to refund things on that. Same thing with tax credit. A lot of tax credit goes to field trips and other things that we ultimately reimbursed. Just a couple of slides, you've seen that on the COVID information, but just showing you the meals served drastically down, and then community expenditures, revenues and expenditures were down. The four funds in COVID that you know about, we have received two of those fundings, or we have been approved for the elementary and secondary school emergency funds. That was the $3 million we put into laptops and computers. We have not been able to apply yet for any of the governor's emergency education relief fund. Didn't think we would. There might be a special education case where we can do a little bit out of there, but haven't been able to apply for anything in that arena. The Corona, coronavirus relief fund, or now they call the enrollment stability grant, so the ESG grant is the one that we will be receiving. We applied for it, and it'll be between 12 and 16 million once our 40th day is finished and calculated, and the state has numbers. Hopefully, we'll get those in around December. And then we have applied for DEMA, but no one in Arizona has gotten DEMA money except for the health, the HSA, the administration office, the Department of Health and Administration Services. But hope, we're hoping, got off a phone call yesterday with them and hoping that we'll receive some of those dollars, hoping we'll get 200,000 to 400,000 out of that. So what is, what's that look like on our AFR? Well, we have budgeted $3.2 million for the elementary grant for the CARES Act that we use for teachers' computers and laptops. And ultimately, we didn't pay for those until this fiscal year. So we budgeted for them, but we, they, we ordered them, and they came in right before school began. And those are the ones that Flank Fletcher and his team are working on. But we had the budget for it. But we did move in the other fund, the enrollment stability grant. No money has came in for it yet, but we had to move $8 million worth of expenses. So we moved transportation expenses because a lot of our transportation staff during the fourth quarter, we had them working, we had them out doing security, we had them out working in schools, helping to clean, we had them helping different areas. And then we also had them working on buses or other areas. And so we moved those expenditures. We moved our community salaries and benefits from community ed for those staff, and we moved food service salaries and, and benefits over into that enrollment stability grant so that hopefully, we can build up those funds and then utilize that as our maintenance and operations goes down next year. We can shift expenses into those funds. We will have to do about $4 to $8 million next year once we know that final amount with the stabilization grant. So the last couple of slides are just related to Journey 2025. This impacts, the AFR impacts in a couple of areas, especially in the metrics. We, one thing we do is we make sure that we're always in the top 10% in dollars spent in the classroom, which we have been for years and very proud of. Camille has always stressed that we keep salaries high and class sizes low. And that's been a huge focus for years. And then our outsides contributions are at least 2.5% of our general budget. So we've definitely been able to do that. We put a little chart together. This was last year's report from the Auditor Generals that was released in 19, in February of 2019. Shows you that our administration costs were about 8.5. We did a projection based on our AFR numbers. It'll be at 9%. The only reason that it goes up is because we had $350,000 worth of election expenses in the administration area, and that's coded to administration. So that's the only reason it's increased from 8.5 to 9%. So we should be able to meet that metric. And then down here, total classroom spending, you can see we are, we've done a great job at 60% of direct instruction. Then overall classroom, when you add that, student support and instruction support, we are around 72%. Tax credit contributions, the only reason we feel like it decreased quite a bit was due to refunds related to amounts of, we couldn't refund over 200 or 400, depending on married, filing single, or filing jointly. But we did refund some fam, the families who spent more than that. They were going on a trip, say, that was $1,200. We couldn't refund the first 400, but we did refund some of those trips. And then some of them did not take place, and so kids didn't contribute to those areas. So we still have the same focus that we always have. You can see that it's important up here to have a great financial health. And the AFR proves a lot of times where we're at, a lot of great decisions for many years from Dr. Costile and the governing board. And you can see that in the financial health of our district and that we're able to carry over funds into next fiscal year to really offset COVID, the pandemic. We kept classroom expenditures, you know, as our priority. Classroom, we've tried to have high salary schedules, low class sizes, and we've able to maintain and sustain some of those programs that are really beneficial to Chandler Unified. So a lot of great things, stability. We have a lot of stability within Chandler. That's been extremely important, and you can see that now with the pandemic, being able to make sure that we have funds to take care of. And this year, being able to hire a number of people to take care of the needs that we have in our district to cover the Chandler online and our students in brick and mortar. It's always a goal of ours to make sure we're maximizing all those federal grants and taking, not only applying for them, but spending every penny to make sure we don't roll any over that we might lose. We want to make sure that we're, we have a lot of money within the classroom or the support, support of the classroom that's critical for our district in keeping those administration costs low. We do have size that helps us, but we also have been very low in that administrative area. Capital needs, very blessed that our community has approved a, the voter, the bond back in 2015 and 2019 so that we can provide a nice facilities, keep up with the preventative maintenance that are needed on our facilities, very fortunate. And then keeping that market share. And what I mean by market share is we want to make sure we're attracting the best and brightest teachers, support staff and administrators, and that we're also trying to keep kids coming to our facilities based on the programs that we have. And we feel like we've done a great job with that. We also feel like the city, the arrangements with the city and the state and those private partnerships that we've had over the years have really made a difference for us. And ultimately, that just kind of wraps up overall. We, this, again, our financial health of our district is super important. It's a huge, every time we make a decision, we base it back on Journey 2025 to make sure that it's in the same, that we're not trying to go off in a different direction compared to where our metrics is. And I think that the AFR shows that. We've done a great job managing overall the finances within the district. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. We appreciate all the work that you and your staff have put into this. I know that it's a, a huge undertaking to get everything coded properly and put into all of the correct categories and do the analysis of it. So are there any questions? Mrs. McGee?
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. That was an excellent presentation. It looks like we're going to have two years where the numbers are going to be sort of out of whack because of COVID. Because I see that we have some expenses in the previous year that we're not going to get revenues in, if at all, until this year. Is there, and you did an excellent job of explaining that, but is there a separate report or a summarization perhaps that would show only those COVID expenses? And then as the revenues come in, those revenues that are related to COVID, so that two years, three years, four years down the road or whatever, who's ever on, on the board or looking at the historical will know, you know, why some of those variances, that they were directly related to, to, excuse me, to COVID?
Great question. So yes, so there will be two different funds, Fund 326 and 328, that record most of the expenditures, at least of the revenue we get from the federal government that come in to the school district. So we'll be able to at least look at those two funds. Internally, we've made a decision to code things specifically to COVID-related expenditures. And so we're going to try to track those. So anything that's on top of that expenditures because we know we have more expenditures than we're going to have revenue that comes in from the stimulus amount. And so we're trying to track all of those expenditures. And then we're going to work with Dr. Nance and her team to ultimately make sure that we have all of the salaries coded. Even if we can't code them out of those two funds, we will have them coded. And specifically, we can pull a report that shows how much we spent on COVID-related expenses. We've had to do that some because as we send off information to the federal government for DEMA money and for other things, we've had to code in that area. But also, we want to know what that expense is. So we'll be able to definitely look at those two funds. But then we're going to have to break out maintenance and operation. And we, we're trying to do that by coding it, having a specific code within the fund so that we can break it out and show that in the future. But hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to work with Amber's team too a little bit. And maybe we'll be able to give some infographs that really show that and can highlight that in the future too.
Thank you. Mrs. Bruner?
So just one clarification, if you might be able to provide it. So when we mentioned with the administration going from 8.5 to 9%, you referred to election costs. And I was wondering if you could just clarify that to make it clear that it is not to influence an election using public resources? And exactly how that was used?
No, the great question and good point. Yes, we're not allowed to utilize any money to, to influence the outcome of an election, but we do have to pay for the voter pamphlets and the voter material that actually gets sent out to our residents. Just like this upcoming election, it will cost us, we have a write-in candidate on this upcoming election. So that will cost our school district now like $80,000 to $90,000. Where if we didn't have that, we wouldn't have it on the ballot whatsoever, and wouldn't cost the district anything. But in the past, every time we have an override or a bond, it is between, it's about $200,000 to $300,000 has been in the past. This past year was $350,000 out to all of our constituents.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mr. Evans, do you have any questions?
Don't have a question. I just wanted to echo what Mrs. Mossman said, Mrs. Berry, because not only have you had to modify this report as you do every year over and over and over again, but you and your team have had to interpret what the state has offered or not offered, and what, what's come from federal. And I, I just can't even imagine how much work you've already done and how much work you're anticipating will have to be done in the next couple of years. So just, I mean, it's not enough, but thank you so much for all of the hard work you're, you and your entire team are doing to find the resources and, and keep us in, in as good a shape and feeling good about it as we can.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Our team has done a great job. Lauren Randall and Heather Cavier have been working a lot of hours. They got to take a break last week, the first time since the, since COVID broke out. And it was a great, so thank you for letting them have a fall break because they got a chance to get away. But they've done a lot of work to make sure that we are accounting for everything accurately and going after every dollar we can go after. So they're a great team.
Mrs. Berry, you and I talked a little earlier today concerning some of the things. And you, and you were saying that you're on a, shall we say, a mission to make sure that every, every employee and every item is coded in direct, actually, in the appropriate coding category that it should be, such as our gifted teachers now need, now need to be in special education and in, in those categories. So as we move forward and look at our next year's budget, which are, or subsequent years, as we look through the, those new codings, the codings where you've had to move some things to the ESG and other, other codes due to some of the additional expenses to COVID. But we would have had some of those expenses if we were able to, I mean, like for this particular, the quarter that we just finished, we did not have a lot of our support personnel and individuals who were getting a salary, food service people that were getting salaries. How will you be accounting for that in our budgets going forward since we don't really have, I guess, really accurate full-year data?
Great question. And it's very similar to Mrs. McGee's question too. It's going to be difficult for the next couple of years to compare everything without us pulling some documents internally and creating some reports. It's actually extremely difficult with a lot of the things that have happened. And they gave us some relief on Friday, saying that we could now code teachers in the future to the enrollment stability grant. But before, you were not allowed by the federal government to code a teacher into that fund. So you are very creative. Our team has met multiple times to move different people, positions, supplies, costs, capital things, of what we knew we could move into the enrollment stability grant. And then in the future, because our maintenance and operations going down, how do we move expenses out of maintenance and operations in 2021 expenses out of maintenance and operations in 2021 when our enrollment goes down and into those other funds? So it is going to look a little crazy for a couple of years, and we're just going to have to hopefully find some reports to really show the board and to show those comparisons because a lot of that money is going to show up in the enrollment stability grant, and our maintenance and our operations is going to look like it's drastically down this fiscal year. So it's going to take us some preparation on internal reports to present to you because it will look off compared to what it typically does because of us moving between levy funds and federal funds.
Okay. So your work is cut out for you, it looks like, for the next couple of years on all of this. So we'll be happy when things get back to whatever the new normal is going to be.
They will be, too.
Any other questions? Thank you again so much, and please thank your team on behalf of all the members for doing all that work and putting in so much effort to get all of this accurately recorded. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So we will go ahead and reconvene at 7:00 and with our regular board meeting.